Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 1st, 2019 Board of Selectment Sewer Commission meeting. All members are present. First item on the agenda is Executive Session. John?
All right. Consider entering into Executive Session under the provisions of Mass. General Laws 38, Section 21A, Part III, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bonding with union personnel, DBW and cemetery unions. I move to enter into Executive Session under the provisions of Mass. General Law, as to Chapter 38, Section 21A, Part III, and discuss strategy with respect to collective bonding with union personnel, DBW and cemetery.
Second.
Mr. Kittredge?
I'm accusing myself.
Mr. Rajesh Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Hadley?
Yes.
Mr. Rucha?
Yes.
And we will be reconvening in an open session. The Board is now reconvening in open session. The first item on the agenda is Public Comments. Anybody hearing none? Next item on the agenda is the Approval of Meeting Minutes, July 11th, 2019, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. July 11th, 2019, Executive Session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. So moved. Rise into the warms.
I move to approve warrants for the period covering July 12th, 2019, to August 1st, 2019. Town payable warrants, FY 2019-55, FY 2020-3, 4, and 5. Sewer FY 2019 SE 28 and 29. FY 2020 SE 2, 3, and 3A. Payroll PR 2019, 27, 2020, 1, and 2. MLT FY 2020, number 3 and number 4. Score FY 2019 S 21, and FY 2020 S 2.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Next is Cheryl St. Louis, Treasurer Collector, for the Review and Approval of the Note Results for the Senior Center.
Okay, so I actually have the documents for the van. If you guys can sign all the blue tabs. There's one copy of this, and then each copy has four.
Can you, just so the public knows, tell them how much the bond was and the interest rate and all the details, please?
Yep. So, the van was for $5.7 million. The interest rate came out to 1.4167, and we went with BNY Mellon, and there was eight bits, and they were the top one of it.
And so the town knows the Board voted, we're not ready to bond the Senior Center yet, because we don't know what the final price is. So this is a temporary bond for six months, and at the conclusion of the six months, we will go for the permanent bond for the Senior Center.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Next is John Scannell, Division Director of DCR, Division of Water Supply Protection. Update on the Regional Recycle Center.
Hello. I'll be brief. This is a once-a-year visit with the Board. The center continues to run well. They ran 149 open days in last fiscal year, mostly a volunteer operation, servicing, as you know, seven towns in the watershed. They continue to run really with limited issues and open, same schedule they've been for a number of years, three days a week and one Saturday a month. They spent a little money this past spring to do some resurfacing on the site, probably the big project of the year. Majority of the site is gravel and, you know, between dust and mud. It's been a bit of a challenge off and on, and they put grindings down on the areas that weren't paved this past spring, which really has improved the condition. Beyond that, they continue to run, like I said, mostly volunteer operations and always looking for volunteers, because they serviced, this year they had 30,000 cars over the course of the year. Now, a lot of that is people coming in looking for stuff, you know, in the reuse center, but they put in more than, more than a million pounds of construction and that type of debris, amongst other things. So, very successful, running well. They are seeing some spikes in costs, all of a sudden from haulers and recyclables are begin, a lot of recycling streams are drying up, so it's hard to get rid of some things, so costs are going up, but trying to hold the line, but may need to look at some increases in this fall in some of their pricing. Otherwise, running well.
Questions from the Board?
I just have one. This pink bag thing we're gonna go through, are you aware with that at all, with the rubbish?
Nope. Not aware.
Nancy's gonna give an update.
Oh, okay. It's just something, gonna pick up clothing.
You wanna skip ahead to your update on that, Nancy? Just so John knows?
Well, actually, we could sit down and go over it if you want. The pink bag program is, it's put on by the gentleman who does the, simply recycling, and they will go around with a van. They do the same trash routes as we have. They hand out pink bags. They do a flyer and let everybody on the trash route know that in your pink bag you can put clothing, shoes, accessories, households, tools, small toys, and they have a whole list of things, small appliances, and you can put it up with your trash, and they will come around and they'll pick up your pink bag. If you're cleaning out a house and you need more bags, they'll drop off as many bags as you need. The whole idea is to get a lot of this stuff out of the waste streams and hopefully cut down on our tipping fees, and they also give the town back funds. They're estimating, looking at what we collect and what we dump, we'll probably get about $1,200 or $1,300 back a year, but hopefully it will, and then they reuse some of the stuff, and hopefully just getting it out of the waste stream. It's a program that was in the town of Grafton. I had heard about it, and SWAT's been working on it, Norm has been working on it. It just went to Shoesbury, and now they're working with the City of Worcester. So, yeah. We think so, too.
Yeah, I think anything that's working to get stuff out of the waste stream.
So I think we reduce another, what's coming in for you people?
And hopefully will, and that's not a bad thing either.
Yeah, exactly.
If I could just...
Go ahead.
So, it is still limited. The only people that can come in are by license check.
Seven towns, you have to be a resident, one of the seven towns.
That can use the facility at all?
Yeah. And certainly don't need more, more people coming, so I don't see a change.
Can I just ask a question in regards to all the DCR side? I mean, I guess, you don't have to give us an answer right now, but the cars white, the overgrown grass, I don't know if you guys do it, state DPW? I don't know the answer. We've talked about it.
Well, it is actually, it is actually DPW.
Okay.
I know on occasion we have gone over and done something, but, yeah, inside that wall is in that right away. And in fact, you may not remember, when we did the design for the stormwater work, there was discussion of the sidewalk going in and a grass strip, and DOT was, you know, hemming and harring about the grass strip, and that's why they paved the whole stretch between the sidewalk and the wall, because, you know.
And now it's just weeds growing up.
That's fine. So, well, yeah, I just don't, I remember I was talking about it when we met with the state, but, thank you.
Yes. Since Mr. Rucha asked, you know, DCR, do you have any plan on leveling or paving the parking lot or the...
At the rail trail? We don't have any plan for paving. We continue to struggle with that puddle that no matter what we does, no matter what we do, and your town administrator reminds me regularly when there's, when the hole gets...
Maybe asphalt will help us.
Yeah, no, it, we do need to look at alternatives, because it's, that hole continues...
You know, a lot of people are using it.
Yeah, and that hole continues to open up, and no matter what we do, it comes back.
Anybody else? Could you, just so the public knows, announce what the hours of the recycle center, dates?
Yeah, the recycle center is open Tuesdays, 9:30 to 11:30, I think. Wednesday afternoons, 2:30 to 4:30. Thursday evenings, 5 to 7, and the third Saturday of the month. And through the winter hours, December, January, February, they close those Thursday evening hours and do a second Saturday.
Thank you.
And then they do special things all the time.
Yeah, and then special collections, obviously hazardous waste collections, shredding days, things like that.
Shredding day coming up, I think that's one of our... Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is Brian Keven, Department of Conservation and Recreation, Watershed Forestry Project Proposal.
Your website's good? Oh, yeah, perfect. Well, I do have handouts for everybody anyway, so, in case you want to have something in hand to look at.
State my color.
And you notice I printed telephone? Guess where the other five are? Put them over. Look at your work role for me. So, there's a couple of those things I'm gonna hand out to you as well, that we can talk about at the end of this, just to raise awareness at your level and hopefully throughout the town of an issue that is ongoing that we don't want to let go unresolved. Which is, I basically think a mile a minute vine, maybe you've heard of it, maybe you weren't aware that it was in your town, but the state is very interested in trying to control this plant and keep it from getting spread around any further. But before we get into that discussion, I guess there was a request on behalf of the Board to come in and answer any questions, so, you know, I can give a quick spiel, or I can answer any questions that anybody in particular had first.
We asked for a quick...
I'd ask for just a...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, do you spiel first and let us ask the question?
Sure, sure. So, obviously, we've been doing forest management on water supply properties throughout all of our watersheds for, you know, decades now, and the reason we're here tonight is because since the last five or six years, we've been a little bit more proactive in our public outreach process. So, the letters that we sent around to select boards this year, that was actually a first for us. We do post on our website our annual proposals for new forest management projects that we wanna do. This year, we went one step further and tried to elicit some feedback, some comment, at least get some word out to the public. In addition to what we told you and what we usually post on our website, we put together, let's call it a story map here, using ArchJest Online. This is something that anybody can access with a web browser by searching the DCR, water supply, forestry, and you can just search for DCR water supply forestry, you'll find this on our webpage. This, this particular web map shows all of the lot proposals throughout all the watershed system this year. The West Boylston ones actually, this is an interactive map, but do you have control of this right now?
Yes.
So, with a mouse, you can actually zoom in and out on this map right now, zoom into West Boylston. You can drag it around, you can look at stuff, but each individual lot, like if you zoomed into the West Boylston lot, 215 right there...
West Boylston's the only town I noticed that doesn't have the name of the town on it. Every other town, every other town does. West Boylston, you know, right here, I guess it is, right?
So, once you, once you've identified the area you're interested in, you'll notice the tabs across the top of the screen, and WA 20215 is the one lot that our chief forester proposed this year for the town of West Boylston. So, there's a tab across the top towards the right end there, WA 20215. If you click on that tab, that will bring you to an individual map that shows that lot and all the information that we review internally from our foresters hand to our internal review team. So, where it is, how many acres they plan to cut, the kind of silviculture they want to do, whether there are any issues in terms of stream crossings, weapons, rare species, wildlife issues, all of that is contained in this. So, on the left-hand side, you could scroll down through there, all of those little black dots on the very left-hand edge are different pages within this map. Each, as you scroll, if you just scroll right there, you'll go from page to page, and the map itself will update as you move around. Focus in with different, different features identified on the map. There's, so there's a full description of what is proposed on this one West Boylston lot right there. You can see where it is, it's right up against the Holden Town Line. In fact, half the lot, I think, is in Holden. It's a lot we worked, I think in 2010, we did a little bit of thinning on that hill. We accessed it via the little cul-de-sac on, well, it's in Holden, so at that point it's Malden Street, but it's Goodyear Street. We had a log landing up there, went up, crossed the power line, hit a little bit of stuff on top of the hill. This time around, we thinned that time, this time around, we were releasing some of the regeneration that was, that came up in response to that thinning. It looks, I think the amount of regeneration proposed is in a table in here, I think a little bit, if you scroll up a little bit from where you just are right now. Ooh, down a little bit. A little bit more down into silviculture. I think we talked about, there we go. So, our foresters are proposing intermediate-level cuts, which is some sort of partial cutting, not an entire regeneration patch, of about 20 acres and about 21 acres of patch cuts ranging in size from anywhere from about a quarter acre to a couple of acres in size, just to release that existing regenerating trees and try to build up that diverse mosaic of forest structure. So, that's the basic spiel. That's the lot you're looking at this year in West Boylston. Our hope going forward is that this becomes the same thing we'll do every year. In fact, if you want it here, you can see stuff that's going on, proposed that way, river watershed, water watershed, it's all contained in this one map. So, this will be our public interface from here forward.
Questions?
When are you starting?
Excuse me?
When are you starting?
Oh, this, what we're doing right now, this is the proposal process, so we're accepting public comment on these, and our internal review has already happened. So, these are basically what we intend to do. The, once the public comment and review period is over and we've responded to any, you know, any significant comments, I guess, the foresters are free to go ahead and start laying out where they want to make regeneration cuts, where the skid roads are gonna be, and all that kind of stuff. So, that could happen as we, the foresters work continuously throughout the year, but we, we put lots of timber out to bid four times a year. So, September, November, March, June are the four periods. This one, since it's new and there's probably other things in the pipeline before this, this one probably wouldn't get worked until over the winter, depending, depending on how thick the snow is and how easy it is to access, but likely it would not get marked and put out to bid until probably 2020, and then the logger would have two to three years to actually get the work done. So, nothing's gonna happen, you know, right away on this. And, yeah, I just hope that, you know, anybody in the public realm has, you know, a little bit more knowledge about how to go and take a look at what we're doing. The public comment period, unfortunately, as I mentioned to Nancy in our emails, ends tomorrow at close of business, so we're a little late in this, but we tried. We sent out the letter a while ago, so we did get some notice out there. So, if there's no more questions about this lot or forestry in general, I just did wanna make a plug to, to get folks to be aware of Mile a Minute Vine. It's sort of a hot item in invasive plant awareness and control in the state right now. We have a big infestation right down the road on Route 140 where the power lines cross. We, we've been working with National Grid, who does vegetation maintenance on that power line. They're doing some of the work. DCR staff and some volunteer intern staff are doing some of the other work. We're hand-pulling it. We're trying to, you know, control this plant and keep it from producing more seed as quickly as possible. It's gonna take a few years to kind of exhaust the existing seed bank, but we also wanted to make sure that if it exists outside the areas we know, we certainly would like to be aware of that, let Mass. Department of Ag, who's responsible for controlling all this throughout the state, know, and make sure that it's not getting into other properties that just we haven't found yet. That's why I wanted to bring this to your attention and to the...
Residents have this on their private property? Will the, you know, a resident that owns five acres of wooded land say, will the Department of Agriculture come remove it from that property, or is it...
I think they probably want to meet with the landowner and talk about control options. There may be ways for Department of Ag to get contract work in to remove it on behalf of the landowner. It may be something the landowner's interested in and wants to deal with themselves, but they're really interested in making sure this plant doesn't become as bad, but...
On private property, contact, contact the Department of Agriculture for options?
They could contact, they could contact me directly if it's, you know, right against watershed property. I'd certainly wanna know that right away, but definitely MDR would be the primary point of contact for any invasive plant.
Do you have Davy Tree looking for this too while they're up there for the long-term beetle yet?
You know, the, the people who first alerted us to this, I don't know if it was Davy Tree, but I think it was the contractors who just do general vegetation maintenance on the power lines. They notified that, oh, you got a mile a minute here, and so, so we found out about it last September for the first time. We did some pulling, we've done pulling a couple of times this year, and in fact, I was over at the site earlier today, and I emailed back and forth with the National Grid contractor today. They're gonna send somebody around, a crew in there next week to do a little bit more work, to kind of clean up anything that was missed the first time around. So, but we're, so they're doing sort of their, their heavy hand in the uplands, and we're doing our sensitive hand-pulling down in the stream bank. It's Gates Brook.
Right, because I think Davy Tree gonna be going through there again very soon. I think they're scheduled to send about 60 people in there before...
This must be ALB survey work that they're doing. You know, I think they're knowledgeable enough that they probably would...
They would if they were told, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
You got them walking all through the woods.
We can send them a note.
Down as...
We know who to talk to, to get them to send us a note, yeah.
I know they're about to go back down there again, so...
They're even looking, I live up in Princeton, and they're looking at, you know, spot checks outside the quarantine zone. So, my, I got a letter just yesterday saying, hey, we're coming to your neighborhood. So, they're on it. They're really, they really wanna make sure that they don't let ALB get any worse than it was.
Any else? Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Probably a picture version from the website.
Next item on the agenda is Mary Foley, the applicant for Finance Committee. Hello. Why don't you tell us a little about yourself, what your background is, and why you're interested in the Finance Committee?
I've lived in town 36 years. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting. I was an accountant for three years, stay-at-home mom, and now I'm a special ed teacher at Acapulco Regional. I've been treasurer of the PTA, treasurer of the Women's Club, Our Lady Good Council Church, and I'm currently treasurer of the St. Vincent's Palladium Society. So...
Anybody have any further discussion or questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Next is Gary Kelleher, DPW Director.
Good evening. Hello. I just have a couple of things here. I know there's been questions about our process for permits for open, opening roadway. Now, I did bring, I'm sure you guys have this already, but I did bring a copy. So, this is what we, we ask people to fill out when they're applying to order based on the rules and regs of the town. And there's some, there are some questions. There has been some street openings that were performed, in my eyes, that shouldn't have been. So, so you gentlemen know, any state aid money that is used to resurface a road, there is a moratorium that used to be seven years. I did, I know I told you seven before, but it's now five. So, you cannot open a road that local aid monies have been used to redo for five years without special permission, or in case of emergency situation. That being water, sewer, gas, but anything water, sewer, obviously, the permission would come from the Board of Commissioners, that being you. So, I do have a list that I recently got of all the recently paved roads using state aid on my bulletin board. I am in conversation with the state all the time, and this is just a process that's gonna be, it's gonna be scrutinized a little bit more than it has been. So, this will call for inspections. This will call for site visits. This will call for, obviously, and I know, like, an ever-source has their own inspectors come out and inspect the job, but it's also gonna require inspection by the DPW for proper compaction, or flowable fill, depending on what the situation is. Rules and regs also state that whoever opens the road or installs whatever line has to be is responsible for the maintenance of that ditch or that pavement for two years. Doubtful if that has been followed, and I'm not saying in West Boylston anywhere, but it is in West Boylston's rules and regs, and that will be followed. I just wanted to keep you, you gentlemen, up to, up to snuff on that, if you will, so if there's any questions regarding that permit, or, please, feel free.
So, on Maple Street with the gas company cutting for us, and they put regular fill in there, are they gonna come back and fix it correctly?
They have now, and this was just recently found out this week, which I read through the rules and regs, it's two years, they're responsible for two years, and I've already talked to the resident engineer that, and he, he gave the sign-off on that. The DPW did not. I have been in conversation with him, in my eyes, that he is, will be required to repair.
So, it says they're required. Ever-source, I would assume, is gonna say, yes, we're gonna come fix it, but if it's a sewer guy that doesn't live in town, that happened to have a job in West Boylston to fix somebody's sewer, and they say, I'm not gonna, I'm done, that was a year ago, I'm not gonna fix that, what's the recourse?
Well, the recourse is to, I mean, you're saying someone that doesn't do or will not?
Yeah, if you, I mean, what, what's the bite in the regulation to force a contractor to...
Well, you could all, you could always, because it does state it in the regulations, you could always go through the legal process. My course of action has always been if somebody doesn't adhere to the rules and regs of any town, that they will not be issued a permit by my department for any reason.
And that's why I said, you're not gonna have an issue with an ever-source, but if you have a one-off contractor that did a sewer repair, and he, it was the one sewer repair the guy had done in West Boylston in 10 years, I understand he's not gonna get another contractor, another permit, he's not gonna be looking for one. Do we have, absent any legal, there's no bite in there that says, hey, you gotta do this, you gotta do that? It would have to go through the legal process?
Yeah, I would say the legal process, other than what it says in the rules and regs about a two-year responsibility.
So, can we ask them to be bonded for that?
Do we do, yeah, they do, they are required to be bonded for that. They have to, they have to produce an insurance bond for every, every job they do.
So, wouldn't the bond, if they didn't cover it?
It, that would cover it, it all depends on the expiration of that bond and how long they have it for. A big place like, like the Grid or Ever-source would have a blanket bond, and they would give that to us, and it pretty much covers them year-round. It's generally renewed yearly, but they would have a blanket bond. It's generally renewed yearly, but they would have a blanket bond. As, as would a contractor and then other, I can't say West Boylston, I haven't checked that, but other contractors and other communities, um, do, do submit blanket bonds. And I was always in conversation with the insurance agency and the contractor that was responsible to do the work. It's gotta be tightened up. It's gotta be, and it will be tightened up, so, um, I apologize for, for the misgivings we had on, on a couple of situations, but, um, that won't happen again. There's a lot of marks that I see, um, driving through town, and I'm sure you gentlemen see them too, the white mark, the white paint, the blue paint. Have no idea. I haven't, hasn't seen a permit for them yet, so I'm, I've gotta keep an eye on it. I just don't want people going in and cutting up the street.
All these regulations are on the town's website and Public Works.
Yes, sir.
Get the application there or get the...
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on street openings? Are you doing next sewer abatement or Joe Evangelista?
I do have, I have the sewer abatement forms right here. I have the first one here is from sixty-eight Bowen Street, from Diana Engelbert in, um, Engelbart, I'm sorry. And what I have... It appears that she, um, had a boiler failure in her house and lost an excess amount of water due to that, and she did have prices, she did have contractors, she did have the repair. And she was looking for a rebate of two-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and forty-three cents. The bill she paid was two-hundred-and-eighty-eight sixty-seven. So, what I have done with Ms. Engelbart is I've gone back eighteen months for her charges and averaged out, um, and her, obviously, her last bill is extremely high, and we're talking, she was thirty-seven forty-six dollars, and her last bill was two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. So, at any rate, I averaged it out and, um, it, my figures came to the amount to be, um, abated at two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and ten cents. Now, um, by the documentation she gave me and, and the woman's word, um, she, um, that's the only way I have of knowing. There is no secondary meter. There is no meter readings to know exactly how much water she lost. So, my only course of action was to take an average. I don't know if you gentlemen have her bill in front of you, but to take an average of her usage and, um, recommend the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and ten cents to be rebated, abated.
Yeah, because the usage was almost perfect, every monthly, so it was all the way down, it was the same, but then you get that one month.
Exactly, exactly.
So, under our regulations, there is a section for this that we...
Excuse me?
...for our policy? Is there a section that we can, that we've made people like this in the past?
Yes, 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 I think there was, as a matter of fact, I had a whole sample sheet of how many abatements have happened in the past and...
You guys in the same type of situation?
Same type of situation, as long as, um, the abatement is, obviously, it's for the water that does not go into the sewer system.
We have a motion?
I'll make a move to approve the abatement.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, some more?
The second one I have is, uh, Mr. McAdams of, uh, thirty-eight Henry Street. And, uh, the note that we got from him with the application for abatement stated, we had a water spigot burst and caused our outdoor faucet to run for an unknown amount of time. Again, there's no way of me to know how much water they lost. Um, a spigot, a broken spigot, um, does not go into the sewer system, it just run on, onto the road. So, I did the same thing with the average from the same time period, and it came, um, their average was seventy-nine eighty-nine. Ian, I'm trying to see the amount I recommended for abatement.
I'm looking at a, I'm looking at a short report. It's in the one-fifty to one, one-thirty to one-fifty range on the bills you gave us, and it did go up to one-eighty.
One-seventy-nine fifty was the last bill, yes, sir.
But you're saying the, what, what, the average you got was seventy-something?
No, the, I'm sorry, the abatement amount would be seventy-nine eighty-nine. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, the average of all these bills...
I did the average, right, right. Did the averages, subtracted it off the amount.
Cause it, here's some bills, a hundred-twenty-three, a hundred-twenty-three, a hundred-and-twenty-eight, one-forty.
How far did you go back to get the average?
Eighteen, eighteen months. I went to the first, the first reading of, uh, in January of eighteen.
So, if you... Yeah, but if you go back eighteen months...
Um, and I did both, both the same. I went back to the first reading, the first quarter, if you will, of January of eighteen.
Start with one-thirty, one-eighteen, and you take the average of all of these bills, that'll be a hundred bucks. Does that make sense?
So, in the past, we, we don't deny anything like this, you call, or this, these are the cases? I know we've denied some, but I don't wanna set a precedent. Is this in our policy that these type of...
Every equipment failure once since I've been on the board has come before us, we've approved.
We've done, we've done equipment failure. We have not done, um, watering of lawns or holes.
Better in the policy that they have to do.
Right, we've have suggested, such as a, a situation with a broken spigot, that a secondary motor, um, um, meter should be installed in the house. So, we always suggest that, that they purchase the meter from the water department, have a secondary meter for external watering purposes. So, if this happens, we know exactly how much.
How much does an external meter cost to have it installed in the house?
It's, it's generally in the hundred-and-forty to the two-hundred dollar range.
For the meter itself or the meter and the labor?
The meter and the labor.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars?
Yeah. That's, I, I thought it was a lot more expensive than that when you...
Well, okay, well, I guess I'm, I'm going by where it came from, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you call, I, I, I looked into it years ago.
It's four hundred just for the water department.
I see, okay, I see, I'm used to having a water department under my purview, so we, we charge the folks exactly what the meter costs us. Probably a different style meter. We use Tersi, a hundred-and-forty dollars, and town cost. They paid us for the meter and they had to hire the plumber.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, a plumber, it's, it's, it's not economically feasible to put in a second meter in, in case you're gonna have a, a, a break. If you have a giant garden that you water every single day, that's a different story.
Right, or an irrigation system, certainly, certainly, certainly. I'm not aware of how much a plumber would get or how long it would take or the, the copper or what they have to put in the line, just what it would cost, uh, the person to have to pay the town for the meter.
Any further discussion?
Is this the only way to do it? How it is done and then deduct?
Yeah, that's what we've done.
No, the, the policy says that they must pay the bill.
No, I'm asking you, I didn't hear what you said.
But the calculation, is it, is it, do we usually take an average of the previous eighteen months and then deduct?
That's all we, yeah, that's the only system we use because there's really no other way to, there's no other way to really do it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed, some more? You have a, Joe Evangelista?
Uh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Evangelista applied for a...
I need to recuse myself because I've done business with him in the past.
Anyway, recently, um, there are a, um, three, I believe, units being, he applied for to put on Woodland Street at Pinecroft, in the area of Pinecroft. And he asked for a permit to go underneath the pavement of, of Woodland and...
Perhaps, perhaps if they wanna...
Oh, thanks, thanks, okay.
All right, there's one for everybody if they wanna...
Oh, okay. Oh, at any rate, um, underneath the island at, at Pinecroft, I'm just gonna call it Pinecroft with everybody, everybody knows actually where it is.
And then tie into a manhole on prospect. Uh, my issue with that, my understanding of the board, where this woman, the final decision, my issue with that is, well, it was fairly recently paved within three years. It would fall under the moratorium. And it would go under two pieces of roadway and a grassy island. My problem with that, gentlemen, is that, once that is completed, the office...
I'll take one, thank you.
Once it's completed, it would have to be, uh, an easement, it would have to be granted for that sewer line because it would be my intention never to own it. So, the contractor to put it in would have to maintain that forever. And my issue with that, again, is we would have to, if something happened, we would have to dig up two sections of roadway and one, um, grassy area, triangle of a common, if you will. Um, so, my recommendation to the Sewer Board of Commissioners is, um, is not to allow that. Um, as the gentleman, Mr. Evangelista, does have an alternative of putting E1s and going th, out to the trunk, which has been done in the past, which runs in the backside of his properties.
So, if I could just ask, so, now he wants to go from these, these yellow properties here across...
Across Woodland.
Yeah.
Across the common, the green area, into a manhole that's out in, on the other side of the prospect.
Okay, but he has a, he has a way he can do it without going this way, and how would he do that?
Yes, he could put in E1, uh, uh, E1 thrashers and tie into the trunk that runs behind the property.
Well, can you explain, like a pump?
Yeah, it's any, yeah, it's any one pump, I'm sorry, it's a pump.
So, you'd have to pump up to the...
Pump up to the trunk, right.
And that, that's on a road behind?
That's up on a road behind, um, the trunk is up here behind his properties.
Is it about the same distance away as...
Uh, yeah, pretty much. Probably Joe would know the exact footage better than I would, but...
But it's, it's...
Cause it goes up behind, well, from the, from the dwellings themselves, there's two dwellings here, and it'd have to go back to the trunk. Joe, do you know what exact the, um, the distance is from the dwellings to the trunk?
To the, the existing trunk?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say it's about two-hundred feet.
Okay. So, roughly, yeah, roughly the same distance.
If I may, why, why do you wanna go under the road versus to the existing trunk?
Uh, it's a gravity feed system if you go that way.
Versus having to have a pump?
Right, and, um, also, we, public water is there also, so we have no access to public water without going into the road at this point.
So, what's your option to get public, to get water? You gonna drill, uh, dig wells at these houses or...
Apparently, you'd have to put wells in if...
Well, there is, there was a water line that was put in from the main, the hydrant further up.
Yeah.
Um, that does go to your, to, to the property, so I don't know...
I have no problem with that.
Excuse me?
Does that not part of the, the moratorium road?
The, the water line is already there. Somebody tapped into that prior to me.
Yeah.
And there is a very distinct ditch, ditch line, if you will, or pavement, um, ditch line that does go across from the hydrant across to your property line.
We did that for the two-forty-three house.
Okay, and I, as far as I, not knowing the particulars of, of the size of the line you put in, Joe, I, I would, I would believe that that same source could be used for these two units for water.
As long as I get permission here tonight, I would, that would be acceptable to me.
To tap, to not, to go across the road, to tie into it where you've already, or someone already has?
And not to go back in the road.
We can't give you permission to tie into the water because that's the water part.
The person to go to that, get the water from the meat, back from the hydrant again, where the water line is.
I don't know if you gentlemen have written up in that area, but there's a very distinct ditch line that does come from a hydrant across, across that newly paved, well, three years paved surface to, uh, Mr. Evangelista's properties. For the initial building.
So, he needs approval to...
From the water, he's gonna need the water, approval from the water department and the, and the water commissioners.
Water department, so I have a question, Gary. We can get the water, I mean, is this just this piece?
You already have water right here.
I understand, but is this just a piece that was paved here only?
That, that it was what, that was paved?
This piece, is that what we're talking about that says moratorium?
No, this whole, this whole, no, this, yeah, this piece was paved and as well as the whole intersection was paved. So, all, all of that is covered under a five-year moratorium.
Okay.
So... So, you would be cutting across for sewer, obviously, Woodland right here and across, you'd be tapping in to...
I have, I have no problem with, but if, if, well, the water department, you pay us sixty thousand dollars in water fees, so I'm sure they're gonna give us access to that hydrant. The question is...
But you already have access to that hydrant.
We do, but there's only, there's only one inch line coming out of there for the service of a single-family house.
That would be under the water department, I don't know what size line.
Okay, we're gonna need, we're gonna need, we're gonna need a four-inch line to go back in and bring a four-inch line across the service of these, these two buildings.
Okay, and that would have to be initiated with the water department and then the water commissioners to see if that line could be, I would much rather see that line made bigger than do another cut.
And to run it across here for water, which is not in front of us.
Do it another cut, because you've already got an apparent cut that, that...
And, and the sewer couldn't go through that same cut?
No, the sewer's, uh, sewer's further down halfway down to the island. Different location. I could, I could, I can show you. The hydrant is up here, so he cut, somebody cut and put a ditch, very obvious ditch, across here for water service, hydrant's on this side of the road.
Okay.
Across the road, this is where that water service, that, Mr. Evangelista, says a one-inch line that services the first dwelling. Now, here, halfway through the island, this would be where he was proposing to put the sewer straight across and then tie it to another manhole.
Or just go in somewhere back here?
Back here, there's a sewer trunk that he could, he would pump and pull out to the...
So...
And again, if the sewer commissioners decided to allow that, I mean, I'm, I'm here to give you my recommendation, um, there would be very strict guidelines that he would have to follow, such as definite flowable fill. The problem, um, that's not my big problem, the flowable fill. My big problem is if something happens, it's owned by Mr. Evangelista and easement, and he would have the right to go into repair.
Okay. I think it's, I, again, I think it's very messy to go this way for the town, to go through, I think that's called Gleason Square, correct?
Yes.
To go through the square and get easements. When there is a way, I think, I think if there was no way, I would really, uh, try to work this out because, you know, he's building these, you know, nice condominiums over here and it's... If there was no way to get sewer, I would, I'm sure you would even look at it different. If there was no possible way but that.
Certainly, I'd be with you and just say there is no option, because the only other option, if you didn't have the trunk behind you and you didn't have a viable source in front of you, would be private sector.
Just to let you know, there's a natural gas line that runs right exactly on the road edge, past the lots. I mean, literally, it's, it's at the edge of pavement. So, there may be a need, we're hoping not to have to disturb any pavement to get the natural gas line, but you can see, you'll see the three black marks on the page there? There's a little box there that shows the natural gas line.
The one in the middle of the other two bigger box, black boxes.
So, that, that would, that...
That's off the edge of pavement?
Then would have to do, you know, would have to do propane gas to the units instead of going maybe two or three feet to get the gas line back to the properties.
But you have not filed for that permit yet, right?
And we have, and that's, again, that's outside of the purview of this, that's something different, so...
I don't know, I, I, this is all new to me. I've been opening the roads here for twenty years, and this is the first time I've had an issue opening a road, and I understand Gary's thoughts here, and you can look at every patch I've ever made down in the road and would stand behind it, and I don't think I've ever had a callback on any time I've opened a road and the town of West Boylston enclosed it. But, again, if we, I mean, we may, don't open, make a two or three-foot cut in that road there to get the gas lines into the, into the eight units we're proposing there.
Again, Joe, just so you know, just not to be misunderstood, I, this is the first I'm, I'm hearing of the actual gas.
Yeah, I understand.
But the other one is not, and I'm not, certainly not complaining about any of the patches you've done. What I'm worried about is a, is a permanent easement to you right across all of this, which you'd have an easement and have the right to go in.
So, so, so guess here's what I'm looking for today, if possible, from the board, is that we can go backwards into the, into the easement. It's gonna have to be pumped. I mean, obviously, it's, 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 it's not a gravity feed system, it's not ideal. Um, but, you know, we're looking to go in that same trench and get our water and be allowed to go, just be able to go in, say, four feet at the road edge and, uh, and we'll flow, we'll fill it and put it back to get the gas line, which is probably three and a half or four feet deep into the road.
Into the road, and you have, have they gone out and marked that? The gas company?
We have, we have not had, I, I just got the call in last week to request the gas services.
Oh, okay, that's why, okay, so I haven't seen anything that would have to be...
Yeah, again, that's not, I understand that's a big concern for you, but that's outside of, we're, all, all we're concerned with right now is the sewer, because we're the sewer commissioners. That's Gary, a building inspector.
As a board of selectmen, don't you vote on the, on the, on the waiver to, to enter the road? Or is that a sore...
No, that's not, that's not a board of selectmen to, would not be voting on a waiver to enter the road for, uh, gas line.
So, water would control that, Mike would control that?
No, who would, yeah, who, uh, Gary, who, who...
That would come into the purview of the DPW for the gas.
To, to open the road within the, out, within the five years? It's up to you to make that decision?
Yes.
It doesn't come back in front of us?
No, it would go, it would go to you, such as the sewer and water commissioners. I would make, I would make that decision whether they could go in there or not and, and also set the guidelines for how it had to be done, but I have not seen anything on that, and I'm not, I really don't know the location of the tie-in. It would be, uh, assuming it would be Ever Source that would come to me and approach me over that.
Yeah.
And I have not been approached, so I can't, I can't really address it at this time.
Any, any discussion on, further discussion on the sewer? We have a motion on the sewer. Hearing none, we will pass over the request. Under other, do you have anything else?
I do not, sir. Uh, I'll, the only, I'll give you some updates and let you know that, um, the pave obviously is complete on Hosmer... I do not, sir, I'll, I'll, Billy, I'll give you some updates and let you know that, um, the pave obviously is complete on Hosmer and Keys, and the crews have been down there filling the shoulders, um, aprons, low spots, catch basin repair, so on and so forth. I'm very with the hap, very happy with the work the paper did and also the work that the DPW did down there, the jet, the crew down there. Also, our, two of our trucks, um, as you know, the, passed the town meeting for new bodies and controls, one truck has been completely stripped and sent up to, um, to Madigan to have that installed, the stainless body. And the other is in the process, it has been stripped, but now it, it's at the point of replacing old lines, sanding, grinding, so on and so forth. I'm very, and very happy to see that the, the two guys and, and others that have helped them have taken those bodies off and put that work into that, so they'll, you know, they're not just sending a cabin chassis up there and mounting a body on a rusty frame, so very happy, I just wanted to, I would let you know that, that I'm, uh, uh, happy with the progress, I'm happy with the work that the crew does. And I'm also, uh, happy that July fourth of over, is over and winter's on its way. July, winter starts, winter starts on July fifth in my book.
Uh, I guess there was a, a memo that you might have missed in regards to surplus property?
I s, I did see that, um.
Do you not have anything for this round?
Uh, is, what was the deadline? I apologize, I don't have the deadline, I did talk to the fire chief about it the other day, because I'll have those three bodies, but as you know, and, and most people know, they are rust buckets, but they're, you know, they're certainly scrap value, but they, um, I have not sent them to, uh, to Nancy's surplus.
We could add it on right now.
Could we add it on now?
Of course we could.
You want to do that right now or?
We, we certainly can, we, we'll have no need for them, other than, other than scrap value.
Three?
There's three, three bodies.
What are the bodies you're talking?
The sander bodies.
For the trucks, and do you, anything else you can pick up off that section now?
Uh, no, no.
That's fine, we can do it the next.
I can, I'll, I'll double check that when I get back, I mean, just see what the days, I don't know, it's, that's expired.
That's fine.
And one other thing, we had a discussion about, um, the water, so the townspeople know, if you have, it's a little late for this, but if you have a swimming pool, you can call the water department, they will shut off your sewer meter so that you can fill your pool, then they'll turn the sewer meter back on, it costs about thirty dollars to have them do the two reads, but if you have to fill a whole swimming pool, it's gonna save you a lot of money in sewer fees, so that is an option if you're, if the one-time pool fill.
That would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any update on Lee Street, the Upper Lee Street?
Lee Street, um, obvi, and you and I have talked many times about Lee Street, um, and that's Malone and McBroom that are doing the engineering work on Lee Street, their biggest, um, function in town or pro, project to get out of the way, if you will, was the Crescent Street sidewalk. Now, obviously, I've been in, in meetings with Nancy and the, the gentlemen, the engineers over that, and have asked the question at our last meeting, when that situation was gonna be taken care of, and that's what they stated, I don't know if you remember that, that they just wanted to get the Crescent Street paperwork out, the bids in, and then they're jumping on Lee Street, which a certain amount of money, I think it was twenty thousand dollars, was, um, already approved for that. Um, they had some different ideas of where they want to go with the drainage, uh, very costly, so I threw some of my ideas at them, and that's the way we hope to go, but that is the next, next project to be taken care of.
Apart from the Lee and the Hosmer, are we going to pave any other roads?
Lee, Lee?
I'm sorry, Keys and.
Keys and Hosmer, well, I did have, I did talk to, um, um, the state engineer, um, asked him for my new ledger, I know the governor did sign the bill and our, is, extra money's coming in, so I just have to make sure that everything's in order, that balances are good and do my estimating.
So I know that in IU, uh, the DPW is cutting all the overgrown scraps along the roads, there are some of the signs, like the stop sign, particularly in the Worcester streets, when you want to get, get, you know, from the side seats to coming into the Worcester streets, there's a, like a very dangerous intersections, is there a, can you consider cutting all?
Well, we are considering, we do send them out depending on the weather and what else the crews are doing, but.
It's a nice weather.
I mean, this is the time of year, actually, um, and I'm not, I'm not complaining, I certainly thank them for doing that, that most, most of the gentlemen try to take their vacations when they can, because they can't take it in the winter. So, uh, we are putting them out there with the over the rails and doing the, and doing the brush cutting, I have talked to, um, to others about the signage, I see that problem, if there's something like just me carrying a pair of loppers around on my truck, I'm certainly glad to take care of that, um, do what I can with the signs, because they do have to be, um, in clear view. So, uh, it, it's on the list, Raj, um, and we'll take care of it, and also, uh, on the list that I know, I don't, Mr. Hatley, I don't know if you brought it up first, but was the stop sign on Goodell that wasn't linking anymore? I finally got the battery, the battery should be in, if not, the end of this week, the beginning of next week, so it's a seventy-five dollar battery, and, um, I have to go up, or somebody has to go up, um, maybe I'll do it, um, drill out the rivets, replace the battery and place the plate on again, and also, down in the, um, in the woodland prospect area, down at Pinecroft, uh, was hit and run for one of those same stop signs, so I did order that and that should be in at the same time, it's a very costly, uh, hopefully, we can, I don't know Nancy, if we can claim that through insurance.
We can, I put those on my supplemental insurance, you send me.
Oh, okay, good.
Sure, no, I can.
It's about eleven hundred dollar item for one of those signs, so anyway, those, those are ordered and will be replaced.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is consider amending the membership requirement for the peg board, the recommendation is to reduce membership from seven to five by eliminating the school, sports, and senior designee and replacing with another resident slot. Chris, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, it's just, you know, we're not getting a lot of interest from those groups, now, just because we went to a resident, that resident could be one of those people, but we didn't, we're not getting a lot of interest, I don't think we've ever really had a school person on it, so, um, I, I don't see why it would hurt.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Any further discussion?
So now everyone is going to be a resident?
Well, everybody was always a resident.
Resident, yeah.
Yeah, they're always residents.
The designation is gone now?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, I personally would still like to see somebody maybe senior connected, but, um, putting it on, under that only, it limits us to just those five people that might be interested in town.
Further discussion?
The only thing I would add to this is, I would, if we find lots of interest, I would ask the peg board to come back and we'll talk about changing this again to, to something, but as of now, for the last year, we have not got that type of interest.
So what are we doing now? We are reducing the number of people in that board?
Yes, five people.
Seven to five.
Seven, right, seven to five, and.
The, all the three are gone, instead of three, three are going to be one.
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Concurrent on the hiring of Karen Hennessy to the fifteen-hour-a-week administrative assessor position effective August fifth, two thousand nineteen, at a rate of eighteen dollars and seven cents an hour.
So moved?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Consider voting to sign a three-year employment contract with Fire Chief Thomas Welsh.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Consider a request from the Parks Facilities Committee for the board to send letters to Senator Chandler and Representative O'Day, asking them to make a push for the five million dollar bond bill funding for the Goodell Park project, and for the board to consider making a formal request of the Parks Commissioner to send letters as well. Um, I'll, I'll speak to this, we had a Parks Facilities meeting, um, last week, earlier this week, uh, this is one of the things we discussed, and it was suggested, um, that we revisit this issue and, uh, ask our representative and our senator to, uh, try to get, get the funds secured. The Parks Facilities Committee is going to, uh, send the same letter, we voted, uh, uh, the Parks Facilities Committee to send the same letter and ask that the Board of Selectmen make a formal request to the, uh, Parks Commissioners, and I, I don't see them having any issue doing it, but we just want it to be a, a formal request from the board.
So, second, I, the only thing is about the formal request from us, I mean, I have no problem, but there are two board members, Parks Commission members on that, I don't know why it would have to come from us.
Doesn't have to.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem sending state rep, but I just, I don't foresee why we should get in the middle of asking that, why would, why wouldn't, why wouldn't they want to send that, that, we need to ask them.
That's just, that's just a vote that was taken.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I don't, whatever.
I, they're not gonna say no.
I mean, and they have two members on the Parks Facility Committee too, so.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye, so what's this formal request, does Nancy write a letter to them or just?
There's letters in your, there's letters in your agenda, and actually, in the signature file, I prepared letters for the, um, suggested letters for the Parks Facility Committee and for the Parks Commission that I will forward to them.
Um, the next item is, uh, consider changing the start time for, uh, it says selectmen's FISP meetings, I, I wanted it on here for, for selectmen's meetings, I didn't want to just unilaterally change it, I wanted to make sure everybody on the board doesn't have any issues starting the meetings at six in lieu of seven, uh, work issues or other issues that they wouldn't be able to make a six o'clock meeting on a regular basis versus a seven o'clock meeting, is there anybody that has an issue with that?
The only question I'd have is, so when we have meetings before the meeting, which we have, it seems like it happens more and more, executive sessions, are those gonna be like five and five-thirty now?
No, I think the, the meeting would still start at six, it's just that the meeting, you know, the executive session and the meeting before the meeting things will still happen first.
Yeah, I, we've had it on seven, is there a reason why we, you want to change or?
Just because of makeup of the board, I think we could all, you know, right, rather, I'd rather get home at eightish than nineish or nine-thirty-ish, uh, on, on a school night, so to speak.
My biggest concern is the, the, the early meetings, then we're, we're moving into five now.
I mean, we can always, I mean, we can, it's not set in stone, whatever time we start.
But it's nice to, for the people to know, the residents know, that the Board of Selectmen, most meetings do start at seven, so the people know.
Right.
That might be interested in watching.
And, and that's why I, I, I didn't want, I wanted to have a conversation about this and say, you know, I, I'd like to change it to six, um, a, a, as long as everybody can make it, if we run into issues where, hey, it's not working, because we need to have all these pre-Board of Selectmen meetings, we could always change it back, but I mean, if we have an executive session starting, like today, we started at six, we had an executive session.
Yeah, but we can still keep the executive session up, even if you start a meeting, yes, yes.
At six.
Well, in the past, most of our executive sessions used to be after the meeting, that, that changed, we slowly changed to before the meetings.
And if you call, the reason we did that is because if we have town council in, rather than have town council sit around and pay them, we would have the executive session first to make better use of.
But we, yeah, but then we just, then we just made it normal, yeah.
Okay, so, we try, moving forward, we'll try, when we do the agendas, we can put them out at six, if it doesn't work, we can always revisit it. Uh, and then it, FISP is on there, do you?
I have no problem without doing it.
The problem with the FISP is, I know Ray Recol would never be able to make another meeting.
That's right, let me talk to him before we, uh, the next meeting.
Okay.
Before we do anything for comment.
The FISP would have had that many meetings moving, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess the question I'll have, so if one member doesn't like it, are we not gonna change it?
That's a good point, because like on this board.
Ray would just have to get off the committee, he would never be able to make a meeting, I, and that's, I, if, put it this way, if, if there was a member on here, John said, look, I can't get there till seven o'clock, I would say, let's keep the meeting at seven, I, I, this board, as it's currently constituted, I know we can all make it for six, well, I, I asked the question, it's apparent now, we can all make it for six o'clock, and, you know, it's always been seven, I wanted to have the, I didn't want to unilaterally say, we're doing it at six now, I wanted to make sure everybody was okay with it, because it's not fair to, all of a sudden, say, one, one member of the Board of Selectmen is gonna be an hour late for the meeting, or, or the member of the FISP meeting.
We'll bring it up in the next FISP meeting.
Okay. Consider requests from the water district to waive, from the Boylston Water District, to waive the building permit fee for their upcoming water stores replacement project on the Boylston, West Boylston town line. Chris, I know Matt spoke to you, I spoke to him as well, do you wanna?
I don't, I don't know much detail about it, they, somebody from the water commission in Boylston brought it up, but I think, I think more the question now is how they're on West Boylston land, do they have an easement to be on West Boylston land?
That I don't know.
And that's, I, and then, that, those are all questions now that have come up to me more than if we should be waiving their fees.
Well, I can speak to the fee piece, I can't speak to why they're on West Boylston lands, I did speak to, uh, Matt Rice, he's a water commissioner, and he verified that this went out to bid, that the, uh, town of Boylston is responsible for any permitting fees, it is not on the contractor, that's how the bid was written. I said to him that I, that I would be recommending that if we do approve the waiver of the fees, that any actual cost associated with, with, if we have to do inspections, or if we have to pay someone to do an inspection, that we would expect West, we would expect Boylston to pay for that, um, but I do know that the fees are gonna be borne by the, the West Boylston, the, the Boylston Water District, not the contractor, if we decide to do this.
Well, that, really, that doesn't matter, if it's by the contractor, the contract would be up a little bit.
Well, no, they've already got the bids.
Right, but I mean, if they went out to bid and they said the contract is to pay the fees, they would, they would indirectly pay it either way.
But if they went out to bid and, and the contractor was responsible for the fees, I would not be, personally, I wouldn't want to waive the fees, because that's not coming out of the, that's coming out of the profit of the contractors, not coming out of the, our neighbors' pockets.
Yeah, but again, you know, the question, first question is, you know, it's our, the spoilston land, so how this boy, Boylston can come and, can they come and, uh, build their?
It's already there, they're replacing the existing tank.
Oh.
So this tank already exists on West Boylston land.
So, again, you know, even if they replace it, they should go to the planning board, right?
I don't know.
Yes.
It's just maintenance, it's just maintenance, Raj, it's just maintenance.
Why would they need fees to do maintenance on it? Why would they need building fees to?
It's a one point two million dollar project.
It's, it's, it's just like, they're replacing something, but I, it's more of a, yeah, I don't think you have to go to the planning board to, uh.
Any of the, any of the project, you know, any of the project in town, anyone, you know, if they do any project, they go to the planning board, how can you bypass a planning, I don't know.
If you tear down a house and build another house on the same property, you don't go to the planning board.
No, that's a, the house is a different building.
A building, if you do a commercial building.
You have to go to the building inspector, right?
The building inspector, yeah, not the planning board.
No, but this is a public project, this is a different project, this is not a individual home, I, I don't know, but I'm just saying.
Can, Nancy, can we look into that?
We certainly can.
Just make sure that they don't meet, Dave, you, hold on a second, make sure that everything they need to do, absent this, the, the fee is a totally different thing.
And, and, and I did check with the building inspector about the fee, and he knows it would be, um, how long does it take him to do the plan review, whatever it is, and I said to him, we would pay for our inspectors, those types of fees, the only thing they wouldn't pay is the fee for the permit, but we would cover our costs, and we did look into this, um, I checked with the town clerk, because it seemed a little odd, usually if you build, you would get an easement, and she couldn't find anything, um, but Mr. Feemy is here, and this was discussed, um, by the planning board, so he may be able to shed some light.
This came about in September of last year, and, um, Bentley was here, and then nothing, I guess nothing was done, and then back in October of last year, they sent, well, uh, Boylston sent an email, and Chris Lund had made a, a comment about it, um, stating that, um, the initial, his initial impression after looking at the sound by was, was that a site plan review would not be required for this project, but asked that we provide the attached request so that a formal determination could be made. I reached out to, um, Chris Olson, who was the chair of the ZDA, because they thought they had to get a, a special permit from us, he didn't think so, I sent all the emails to Nancy, um, also Vinnie and Natalie from the planning board got involved in this, um, basically, I talked to Mike Tovani today to ask him, he doesn't know about any easements, I asked him roughly, when do you think that that tank was built, he said, probably back in the forties or fifties, and more than likely, back in those days, everything was done by, you know, a handshake and a man's word, so it was probably built that way. And according to what I, what they sent us, or what they sent was, is that they're not going to, they, 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 it's gonna stay in the same place, it's just that it's gonna be just, you know, a brand new build, they're gonna tear down the old one and build a new one, basically, um, it's kind of surprising that this all came up now, and here it is almost a year later, I thought. It's kind of surprising that this all came up now, and here it is almost a year later. I thought that this was already resolved, but Nancy sent me a thing this afternoon, and I did a couple of phone calls, and that was the information that I got from Mr. Cuffney.
So for our purposes, I'd like to, let's assume that all the legalities are handled by the planning board, the ZBA, the building inspector, and, and they have the okay to do this project. I'd like to discuss just the permit fee and not all of the other things, because the, the ZBA and the planning board may or may not need to do a review, and the building inspector is certainly gonna need to sign off on it. So assuming that those are done.
How much is the, how much are we talking?
Well, all depend on how many inspectors have to go out.
No, how much is just this fee we're waiving, not the cost of all the inspectors, because they're gonna pay those. All we're waving is that.
I think the new, I believe the commercial fee is $300. And it's $250 for the electrical, which is three inspections, and 250 for plumbing, and that's three inspections.
But, but just to be clarified, that 250 covers those three inspections, so they're still gonna pay when we pay that person to go out.
Yes.
Yes.
So they just want to waive the initial fee of, if we usually charge, like, uh?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Not much.
It's usually $10. Residential's $10 a thousand, I don't know what it is for a commercial, something like this.
Yeah, I think we need to find out, you know, exactly how much fees before, I, I'll be, I'll be comfortable.
I was still making sure that we waived the fees, because I don't think.
Fees will be on the website.
For Boylston, we would wanna, I wouldn't want to charge them, I would assume that they're the same for us if we have the same situation.
Exactly.
I just, I mean, if there was someone else in front of us asking us to waive fees, I think the first question would say is, "How much are we waiving?" I mean, I think that's a fair question. I mean, is it $2,000, $3,000, and it's still, the cost occurred by the building department, they're still gonna pay. So that 250 for three visits could still be 250, because you have to pay the inspector each time to go out, so as long as we're clear on what, what we're waiving.
Yeah, we're waiving just the initial, as a one-time fee.
Permit fee, but we're gonna cover the cost of the inspectors.
We're not waiving the inspection fees at all.
Correct.
And, I mean, our, now, my other question is, is then, do we, if they have inspector, a West Boylston, a Boylston inspector is looking at the project, do we have to have Boylston and West Boylston, both town agencies, sign off on, do we have to sign off on our third of the project that's in West Boylston, or is the inspector that's gonna be doing the Boylston inspections capable of covering us? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, usually on a commercial project, you have a clerk of the works or something like that that would do the inspection, you'd have one, one town, usually one town would do the inspection. I can't see how.
So I don't know that we're gonna, there might not be any need for inspectors on our part.
I don't know, I don't know the answer either, but.
It says in the email that the portion where the new water tank will be constructed is located within the town of West Boylston's town boundary. So it wouldn't, it would be West Boylston doing the inspectors.
Portion of the tank is in, is in, or the whole tank is in?
I thought it was just.
I thought I read a portion.
I was looking at the map. It's hard to tell from the map, though.
Second paragraph in the e, in the email.
The tank located at the end of Cutler Road is divided by the West Boylston, Boylston Town Line.
Keep going.
Okay. Oh, so, okay, so the whole thing might be in our, is in our town.
It is.
$10 per thousand.
I don't think this, I would assume there's not an urgency to do this. We could get what the actual fee is gonna be, would be, and revisit this. Do you know what the timeline for this project is?
Well, it's been, they've been talking about it since.
Well, when are they planning on starting?
So I'm just looking at the building permit fees. It says industrial, 200 plus $10 per thousand valuation. So the property's valued at one point.
1.2, there's 10.
Project.
So it's 12,000 dollars.
So we're waiving 12,000 dollars.
I think we need to clarify, I know, I know back in the forties, they did it by a handshake, but I'm wondering about liability today. That property's on our town.
And, and like I said, I, I think we, what's before us is, do we want to waive the fee? Whether the project's gonna move forward and the whole liability issue, the building inspector, the planning board, the ZBA may or may not get involved in that to say, "Hey, wait a second, you don't have an easement, you don't have this." This project may, the brakes may be put on this project because of that.
I don't think any of those groups handle easement but us, so we need to, we need to clarify the easement section.
Okay, so, and again, if there's no easement.
We gotta clean that up. We have to clean the easement up.
Yeah, if they don't have an easement, you know.
Right, we gotta just make it right now, you know, it's our opportunity.
And I don't have any issue saying, "Hey, we want to make the easement right, and we can table this and, and look at every, look at it again once we get all the ducks in row to make sure that everything is done legally and not the old boy system."
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, and then maybe we can also ask the building inspector to tell us what this, what we're actually waiving, the amount of money. If it's 10, 12, 15,000 dollars, whatever it may be.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table that and we'll move on.
No, no, Cat, if you saw that note, there was somebody here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we, we can skip forward to that. We're gonna skip forward under appointments and resignations. We're gonna do the concurrence on the appointment of Matthew Dewar to the PEG Board effective August 2nd, 2019, return to expire June 30th, 2019. You wanna come on up?
You want Matthew, correct?
Yes.
Yes, he can take a seat right there.
My name is Matthew Dewar.
It's me. I'm currently serving in the Massachusetts National Guard. I'm interested in serving my town. I went to Aspet Regional Vocational High School for Business Technology. I'm studying Political Science. I studied at UMass Boston, did ROTC, and studied Political Science there. I had to go to basic training in AIT this past winter and the spring. I just got back, and now I'm studying at Quinn Stig and transferring over to Western State to study Political Science again.
Questions of the board? What made you decide peg boarding?
Pegboard, I went in and I was interested in Parks Commission at first. I'm just interested in creating new programs for parks and rec, just bringing more summer, summer programs, getting interest in the community, making the town more beautiful, whatnot. And then I went into the office and Nancy recommended pegboard. I read into the description, and I would like to do that. Programming, getting equipment, whatnot, and I found out it was a good match.
I have one more question. What guard unit are you in?
Uh, 3126 Aviation Battalion.
So you're out west.
Yes. Uh, Cape.
Okay. Cape, I was.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Do you have enough time to spend on the schedule?
Over there?
Do you have time to attend the meetings, huh?
Absolutely.
Yep. So you won't be calling for the National Guard?
No. No. If it was, you're gonna, if it was. Let's keep your fingers crossed that it's not.
Yeah, we hope not.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed, so moved. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You'll be, you'll be notified when we have a meeting. Yep, thanks.
I consider voting to recognize the acceptance of the following donations for the Bandstand Committee and to approve expenditure of these funds for general purposes. $200 from the McNally family, $171.98 free will donations to July 14th concert, and $198 free will donations to July 7th concert.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Public hearing on updates to the Gateway Sign Policy.
I need to read the notice.
You gotta read the thing.
Public notice hereby giving that in conformity with the requirements of the general bylaws of the town of West Boylston, Article 23, public hearing in notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Thursday, August 1st, 2019, 7:30 p.m. for the purpose of considering amendments to policy, L15 policy on Gateway Sign. The meeting will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room in Town Hall 140, West Street, West Boylston, Mass. Additional information, please contact the Office of Board of Selectmen, PAC Valley Chairman.
Okay, John, this is your, your thing. You wanna go over the changes?
Well, one of the changes we're gonna do on the back of the signs leaving town, when I just even get some advertisers, with the front of the signs, we get $250 for a three-month period. The back of the sign, we're gonna try to charge 150 so people can, we can get on both sides coming in, because the back is just blank right now.
Coming and going.
Coming and going. And it's actually been doing really well. We've had a lot of interesting people in that, in the, I don't know if, the new sign on there looks great, and I know the man is very happy with the response they've gotten from it, so.
Why not 250?
Huh?
Why not 250? Why 150?
Not as vis, not as visible.
Not visible.
Not as visible as the, I, I would also say that if, if one, if one of the signs aren't visible at all in the back where, where it ends up going, we're not gonna put it on the list.
Right, right.
So thi, this is on the 140 route?
The both, the both is, we have two signs now.
Right.
The Route 12 one is very visible to the back. The 140 one, I don't.
It's visible too, you know, when people are leaving.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
But we have other signs too. This'll, this'll go, if, as we get more signs, this will apply to that.
If we find one that has no visibility, we won't put it on the.
Just curious, you know, on the other side, 250, this side is 150, you know, hundred dollar difference.
It's like the front cover and the back cover.
Yeah, exactly.
Prime advertising space, right.
And, and the, you know, we're hoping to get enough money for some for third signs, so. That was, that was one of our changes.
I get, oddly enough, I still have the notes from the meeting. We also talked about adding locations into the, into the policy.
Yes.
Are, are just adding, or was that just adding new locations?
Where we added about, we can't have a restaurant on Route 12.
Yeah, that, we added that in.
We had, we had that in before.
Right.
And then the other thing was, did we want to put something in the policy in regards to plantings? I know we talked about it and I noted it, but.
Line number five?
Does it say it's mandatory, or is it?
Yeah, it just says.
We asked them to do it.
Wishes to do basic landscaping, they must discuss their plans with the town DPW director. Doesn't say they must.
Yeah, so I, I, that's the other note I had. I don't know, again. If we, if, I don't recall what the, what we finally decided, but I know I have a note on it.
We would like to ask them to, you know, volunteer to keep the grounds, like the one on Route 12 was great, and maybe we can ask them. I don't know, can we put that as the, why not? But see, the problem is, if you have something on both sides of the sign, who's gonna maintain it?
It says the, the roof was adopted at the front.
Okay.
In the, in the new policy, that, that, that was added.
That's what we thought.
So are those the only changes? So the only two changes were those two, Nancy?
Yes, if, if you look under, what are we doing, in the second paragraph I highlighted, "The Economic Development Task Force does not allow any restaurants to advertise on the sign located on the northbound side of Route 12 coming into West Boylston as the sign is located in between existing West Boylston restaurants."
Right, okay. So those are the only two changes.
And then, Nancy, on the third line from the bottom, it says in between existing, add a space.
Okay.
Need any other discussion from the board? Anybody from the public have anything?
Make a motion to oppose the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So are we sure that? The backside, I'm thinking of this now. The rule was supposed to be they take that piece off and have the, the sign painted on it. That's not what's happened, right? People have made signs and they're being, they're bolting it somehow to the current.
Correct, as long as it's not any bigger than the existing piece.
So that's gonna be the same with the back. They're gonna have to build something and have it attached somehow.
Correct.
The, one other thing I'm, I'm, I'm thinking is, you know, so when you are coming from Boylston, so that's the front side, right?
Yep.
So if somebody is maintaining all the flowers and the other things on the bottom, why they have to go on the back side, maintain that area?
No, I think the policy says just.
Policy says whole on the front.
Yeah.
Maintain on the back too.
Because it's.
It's not a very big.
It's not a very, it's not.
Yeah, but still, you know, they may think, you know, the, the people who are advertiser, advertise on the side, they should maintain that side of the.
Well, you can't have somebody do, leave the lines on one side and roses on the other side, something like that, I mean.
Candy brands.
You think about it, you know, so if it is.
Who has adopted the front side of the sign wishes to do basic, oh, so we're not making it, they, the person doesn't have to do anything.
Right, but we're just asking them to do it. It comes out every, comes up across.
Has the one on 140 been, has there been any?
No, not yet.
No landscaping?
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the amended policy?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Next is the public hearing on adopting a policy on procuring quotes for the town, from-town businesses.
Public notice hereby giving in conformity with the requirements of the general bylaws of the town of West Boylston, Article 23, public hearing in notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet Thursday, August 1st, at 7:40 p.m. for the purpose of considering adopting L25 policy on procuring quotes for the town businesses. Meeting will be held in Selectmen's Meeting Room 140, West Street, West Boylston.
Okay, so this is something I had asked, basically what the policy says is if there's a, a business in West Boylston that is offering the services that the town needs, we will solicit a quote from them. And basically, the rest of it says, "If they're the lowest qualified bidder, we will go with them." It doesn't force us to, to accept the bid from anybody in town. It's just saying that we will solicit bids from people in town, because if we're gonna be spending taxpayers' dollars on the town, I personally would like to see it go to town businesses if they are competitive.
Great idea.
Yeah, so this is small, below a certain amount if we're just calling, right? Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, they, you know.
If something goes in the paper and says, "Give bids," this is only if we're calling to build a table or something, and there's a carpenter in town.
Yeah.
But, so, so for instance, that situation, there might be 20 plumbers in town and 10 carpenters. What do we, do we, do we expect that whoever's looking for that to reach out to each one of them?
I mean, it.
You only need three.
Well, then.
How do you notify to the people?
I'm just saying, how do we, you know, sure, there's a different story if, if there's only one guy in town that does this, but.
It's a good point. The policy as it's written says that the municipal department shall request a quote from that town business. So if there's eight plumbers in town.
Could we just set up a simple email that has all the plumbers on it and all the electricians, and we send something out, email all of them, give them a certain amount of time to come back? Something that's as simple as that, whatever the department's doing, it says,
I just think.
"I need a sink put in," and it goes out to all the, the plumbers in town. I know we only need three, but I'm just, because it would be hard, I mean.
Honestly, many of the jobs we have are very small jobs.
That's what I mean.
And most of the people in town do use electricians and plumbers in town, so.
But this is different now. This is putting it, this is requiring the direct, the person that's looking for it to contact all people in town that do that job. So this is, now it was just open, he could just say, "Connaught sign." You know, I'm just using that for an example, you know, we call them, but if.
And there's two, so, you know, not.
Or if there's carpenters, do we have lists of every carpenter? Do we have to contact every one of them?
So do we wanna say, change just, we could make the policy just say, if there are businesses in town, we will request a quote from at least one, instead of saying all?
Could we send it out to the businesses and say, "If you're interested in us contacting you, to give us your contact information," you know what I'm saying? Because there might be some people that might not even, you know, that might be so busy that they don't have time for small projects.
Yeah, but this is, if we're doing a policy.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I know, that's what I'm saying.
Ten years from now, if they're, we're in a, like we were ten years ago, everybody's gonna want that small job.
Right.
Just to keep them busy. So, we, we, you know, in today's economy-
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, I think we need to email everybody then, you know, make a email for plumbers, an email for carpenters, an email. But the other thing too is, um, for parts and stuff like that, we always, I always tried to keep it in town when I could, as far as buying, like, through West Boylston Auto Parts, whatever, if it was cheaper money or, you know, usually, and when you, if you're coming close to prices, if you're sending somebody out to get it, it's definitely cheaper to keep it local. And a lot of times, they'd open up all hours of the night for us too. So, I know they, a lot of the taxpayers go, you know, bend over to help us out, so I mean, I think we have to have something that contacts them all. If we're gonna do it, we gotta touch base with them. Then leave it up to them to get back to us, leave a certain amount of time. Here's the project we have, you know, make it easy for everybody to go. If you're looking for a carpenter, here's a list of carpenters in town, fill out this on the email and shoot it out to them and see what they say. I mean-
It's, it's becoming, it, it's a lot of work for the direct, the person looking for this project.
I, I, I think it should be, uh, shall at least one, something like that.
We can do one of two things. If we go with my group, we can send a, 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 everybody has to have a license. So, we can use that license database to send a blanket email once a year to, to, to everybody this license that says, do you wanna be added to the plumber, carpenter list?
There's no license for a carpenter, so we wouldn't be able to give, we don't give licenses to carpenters.
For plumbers.
And we don't give license to plumbers or electricians locally. There's a state board that does that. I don't know if we could get that list, but. I, I don't, I don't make, make, but I just wanna, now it's a policy, so we're required, we're mandating, we're mandating our directors to do this now, so.
Do we want us to go with, then we say-
At least one.
Shall, if there, if there, should there be businesses in town who offer the goods and services, the municipal department, municipal department shall request a quote from at least one town business?
So, what, what's happening now? Are we not entertaining any West Boylston people?
I, I would say that we most likely are doing this anyway.
Yeah.
Because-
Then why do we need a policy on that?
Because to, to ensure that it, it, it is done.
Yeah, but this complicates, complicates-
Not really. It's good for the town, because like, the people that live in town, that work in town, pay taxes in town, so you want, you want them to reimburse you in your town.
No, I, I totally agree. I'm not against it. I'm, uh, I'm, uh, saying, you know, one person. Who is that one person?
So, now we have the policy in place, and someone's gonna say, geez, I'm an electrician in town. I've never got a call from the town asking me for, to do work.
Which one person?
According to the policy, it would be up to whoever's making the, the request, has to pick, uh, at least one town vendor that offers that service. I mean, right now, there's no policy, and electrician A's getting all the calls from town, because he's the one who has always responded, but electrician B never got a call.
No, to tell you the truth, we used to have a list, Nancy. Didn't we have, like, an electrician that we knew would give us this price years ago? We had-
Many years ago, we sent out, it was under Paul Guida. We sent out for an electrician-
It was under the bids. We used to bid it.
Yeah, it was-
And it was just a general-
Goods and service bid, right.
Yes.
So, a local guy could say, I'm willing to do this work for this, this amount of money, or whatever case.
Twenty, yeah.
But I, I think, I thought it was, I thought it was past Paul Guida, 'cause I can recall-
It was Paul Guida's era.
We used to call one gentleman at the town electrician, 'cause he was always called in, and that was only four, five years ago.
Well, I think we've bid it out a couple times. We haven't had a lot of response while-
No.
Business was good. A lot of them just go to the big bids. Yeah, and I think we did it out a lot of times, and, and, you know, sometimes one electrician will say, I'm willing to do it, and it was never really turned out to be, you know, a bunch of people. That's a problem. I think the idea is a good idea still. I think we should try to reach out, the head of the department should try to reach out to one West Boylston business. At least one. I think that's still, if there's three people in town that do the same thing, reach out to three of them. You have to get three bids in here, right? Thank you, Nancy.
Well, not on something small. If I have, you know, if I have, if my toilet's running, I'm gonna call my plumber that I usually call, and he's gonna come and fix the toilet.
That's the other thing that we might, we might be getting into now. Somebody may have good relationships with someone they've been dealing with for a long time, but now we're setting it in policy that you must now go out and, and ask local businesses first to give quotes.
I mean, best practice is, is you would get three quotes. I mean, if you have a leaky toilet, you're not gonna, or-
I don't, I don't know what gets three quotes. I thought there was a dollar, anything under a dollar amount.
Well, a little higher, but, you know, I mean, we'd have, like, a switch here. Like, we did, you know, I use a town electrician and a town plumber.
Right. Yeah, I think it's just covered under good business practices, and that's what we have to do.
I was always understanding that the procurement laws say, anything under a certain amount, you must get three quotes. Unless you have-
Yes, that's right.
There, there is a dollar number that says you have to get, the procurement laws are gonna say, you have to get over cer, I don't know what the dollar is, over certain dollar amount, you have to get three quotes. You have to solicit three quotes. You don't have to get three quotes. But it also says, best practice is, is you should get three quotes, or, or you should solicit three quotes always.
Always, right. And it's just, that's just filed under good business practice, and that's what they tell you to do. But like you say, if it's something that's gonna be so simple and it's gonna take you more time, and that's the problem. I've got a leaky water thing, but I mean-
I totally agree on all of the things, so we do need to give the West Boylston preference. But, say suppose, uh, Town Hall or, uh, DPW, something needed, so we have to call one electrician, we have to get only one electrician code. Uh, we go, this person is going to get code from person A. He will be getting code from person A all the time. What about the other people? Oh, I wish I would have known it. I would have given my code. So, it's fair to notify everyone.
Again, I, I, I like, I think we all like the idea. We just have to try to, it says right here, when municipal departments procure quotes for goods and services, should there be a business in town who offers those goods and services, the municipal department shall request a quote, a quote from that town business.
Well, that, that's problematic because of the more than one business. So, if we change this to, you know-
It's not a problematic. What I'm saying is, you know, if we have all the list of people who are electrician, plumber, all those guys, we can send it in one single email.
I don't think we have that list.
We don't have it.
And that list is gonna be ever-changing.
It'll be changing every day. So, they will be contacting the town, hey, I want to be on the list.
That's what I think. We should leave it up to them to contact us. Maybe put something out there, say, if you wanna be called in your business in town, send us a copy of your insurance and all this other stuff, so we have it available for the people, so they can make their decision.
Like the list, uh, people who are signed up, they get the list.
'Cause if we leave it up to the contractors, it's up to them. You didn't call us, we would've loved to call you, but, you know, we sent out the stuff. Just, then we can make a base list. Maybe we're gonna have to do this every year, you know what I mean, 'cause it does change. Maybe, I hate this, that sounds tough, but, or we can do it every two years. I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
We do have something in process.
Right.
So, the planning board or select board, if they need to get an agenda, they sign in for that list. Similarly, if they want to hop into this, let them sign in.
Right.
All we have to do is only one email. Uh, we don't have to go anything.
Well, I mean, if we put it out that there's a West Boylston bid list, that you will be, you'll be on the list, you'll be contacted, but what if we get twelve electricians?
What if we get none? This policy says you must call local businesses.
The policy isn't, isn't approved yet.
Well, no, I'm saying, but this policy as it's written says we must, so if none of them say they wanna, they, they don't even wanna call from us, because, like, you know, you said, they're, they're so busy, they probably don't, they, they, you know.
We can put a time limit, you know, for this bid, you know, this is the time limit.
I think, I think we all agree that the current way things are going, we do call local businesses.
Yeah.
So, why don't we just take a look, put this off, and then think of how we might wanna make changes to it? I don't know. If you just wanna make it as simple as you must get at least one quote, or if you wanna come up with some type of list, or we wanna ask other towns on a, on a list how they might do something like this. I mean, that's always-
Do you know, Nancy, if any other towns have policies like this?
Oh, no one has one.
You looked, oh, you already looked around?
I sent an email.
It's tough, because- 'Cause they're probably, they're probably the same person as us, when they were thinking.
Well, the whole thing is, is when times are tough, there's, everybody wants to do it. When business is going crazy, no one wants to come, so it's kinda tough, so. That's why I think we have to leave it up to them to give us the information, but I think we should table it and get all our, 'cause we gotta see actually how many things we're actually gonna be doing, you know, plumbers, electricians, garage door companies. I mean, we've got a lot of stuff.
So, you wanna continue the public hearing?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
So, make a motion to continue the public hearing. I make a motion to continue the public hearing?
No, John.
Okay.
Already did?
It was seconded, too.
All right, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, what are we continuing for?
To revise what, what is written. Come up, uh, think about and revise this and come back and-
So, we would have to re-
So, do you wanna continue until your next selectance meeting?
No.
Why don't we just close the public hearing, next time we have a posting? 'Cause I mean, when you, uh, yeah, whatever you guys say, okay.
I mean, I know we've, we just voted on this, but I, I think a, a simple solution is to change the language. You say, you must solicit from at least one business, in one town business. That way, there's no, hey, I didn't get a call. Hey, the policy says one town business. It doesn't say-
I totally agree.
Who or where.
Totally agree. That one person who, like, is it going, that one person will be contacted every single job.
One person is contacted?
That becomes a partiality. How are you going to justify, we are giving an honest, open to all the business?
How are you gonna justify it now? If the guy that changes the light switch is the same guy every time, how is that an honest and open thing without this policy?
That's why we need a list of names, so we can just maybe make it as simple as go to the next guy on the list, you know? I called this guy last time, I'll call this guy the next time.
The honest thing is, honest, open thing will be, inform everyone who will on the grid.
That, that's, that's a great idea, but there's no way for us to get that list. So, I think what we've done in the past is we post, we listed all the things the town may wanna do, and I said, if, if you're interested in being called when we have these issues or giving a price, let us know. And that's how we picked an electrician and a plumber.
And how is it, how is that disseminated?
How do we get that out?
Yeah.
What is the old way? We do it all the time. The newspaper may put it, we put it on the, you know, we, we're not gonna knock on everybody's door that's a plumber.
Not as a formal bid, but more as a, you know, opportunity for employment type of thing, for jobs.
I just don't, I, I like the idea. It's a great idea, but I just don't wanna put the, a lot of work on the, the department head. You know, it's some, a lot of new work under the policy, so they're making sure, 'cause now it's a policy, they have to follow it. You know, there could be issues if they don't, we find out they don't, so, I don't know.
Why don't we continue until we figure out what we're gonna do?
Do you wanna, can, 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 continue it for, what if it's for three months or a month and a half, two months?
You can do whatever you want. You already, you already made a motion to continue it.
Okay, then-
I was just curious what you wanted to continue it to.
To a time to be determined.
Can I vote? I don't remember from the vote.
You did.
I did. Aye.
John, senior center update.
All right, uh, we're getting close. We got the, uh, a few issues with the lawn, a couple issues with the parking lot. Inside's pretty much done. We had a couple little things inside, but, uh, we're getting very close.
We have one invoice, uh, all right, you done?
Yep.
RAC payment, uh, number fourteen, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, pose, so move.
Yeah, the only thing of the general updates, I would just like to say, we have not-